Dear Attorney, Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have in serving you. We pray that you give us an open heart, open mind to do what you have us to do for the city, help us to get things straightened around, and to do the best that we can to glorify you when we ask you things of Jesus.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Can I get approval of the agenda? I think we need to add or amend and add two things under Old Business. So number three, proposed project application. And number four, Ben's Brockett Skate Park. Madam Mayor, I approve that we accept the amended agenda.
Aye.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Approval of the minutes at the regular meeting and executive session of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024.
Madam Mayor, I approve the amendment.
And the executive session.
And the executive session, too. Thank you.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Moving on to Citizens Business Purple, number one, Sandy Stevens, Kirk County Family Violence.
Hi, so I'm Sandy Stevens. My name is Katie Gold, and I have been the primary victim advocate for victims of domestic and sexual violence for New York, AKA Focus, since April 2023. And Sandy asked me if I could be here today to kind of deliver the quarterly report to you guys. So I have just brief things, but I am all open for any questions that any of you may have. So I'll just kind of get into it from there. Since April 2023, when we originally took over, we have, and today, we have gained 79 new clients and we had 25 already established clients. So I've been working after the, with about 104, we're out here. The type of services that we provide are crisis intervention, legal advocacy, such as protection orders, stopping orders of protection. We also do a lot of safety planning with our clients, and we also offer some life skills. So that could be the logic course that we teach as a parenting class. And then we also offered the Allstate Financial Budgeing Course, which is a great course that I love doing anyway. So the outreach that we do, because it's between Sandy and myself, between here and Kirk County, we haven't been able to do as much of any outreach that we would like to, just numbers. So we participate in a lot of the high school events where we're able to access a lot of students in one big group, such as the Wyoming 307 program, Teen Challenge. We've been doing that now for six years. We have our own station where we discuss healthy relationships through a Jeopardy kind of game, and it allows us as advocates to kind of hear what students are going through at the time and to really create kind of that open dialogue between us, the law enforcement, whoever's, you know, the group leaders there. So it kind of educates us more than the students do, but they seem to enjoy it. And then this year, we were asked to participate in the Newcastle High School Career Fair, which was an awesome opportunity. So we were able to really sit and talk to students that may be interested in some sort of advocacy type of service or victim service field. So as things are coming along, as I'm getting used to kind of the events that go on throughout the year, we're going to really try to participate in those big number ones that we can, because we can commit to that. And then lastly, what I've got is community collaboration. So when I came in, I was under the understanding that trust had to be rebuilt within the community between different entities that we work with, as well as just clients that have come in our door or in our door before. And I've had wonderful success in doing that, if I may, the chief. For a couple of months now, your department and our agency have been working really closely together, which I very much enjoyed. I think it's helped victims immensely. I hope that's for you guys, too. As well as the county attorney's office. So it's a great benefit that we're in that office. So I think that's what was our key player in regards to us being able to get trustworthy relationships with law enforcement and other entities throughout. We've worked together on cases. When I first came in, the Focus, they also had the funding for the Victim Witness Program. We don't have anymore. That's not the county attorney's office. But I came in and helped the victim witness coordinator through education and showing them kind of how victims' comp goes and going through the legal process with clients and what to kind of expect, as well as safety planning, and then also teaming up with other entities throughout the community to help keep them safe. So that's kind of this of what I've been doing throughout this year. Any questions? More than happy to answer for you.
I think it's great to be with you guys, too. And I heard the same thing. Trust has been rebuilt a lot in the community. It's a service that I hope you don't have to use, but it's a customer's part of the house.
Thank you. I mean, I enjoy it as much as you can, but it's kind of hurting me, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Citizens Business Purple, number two, Chamber of Commerce, introduction of Jenny Parker.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hennig. I'm a board member with my Chamber of Commerce. I know we've been talking with you guys, going over budget stuff. One of the things that the City Council mentioned is some of the programs that, as a board, all working full-time jobs, have not been able to do. And so finally, our budget does allow us to hire part-time senior directors. I'd like to introduce Jennifer Proffer.
Proper.
Proper. She joined us, start, began last week with us.
Just last week, yeah. And I've just, it's only been a week, but I've seen just how having somebody right there has helped a ton with all the traffic coming in. We get a ton of retirees that are traveling through the Black Hills or stopping through, and they come in and they have questions about where do I eat, where do I stay? And, you know, they've said before, I've come by and nobody's been there. So right now, I'm just a part-time employee, so I'm trying to make sure that all my time, as much as possible, was focused being there in the office. But I also want to be able to go out and talk to businesses. So we have, her mother actually, is a wonderful volunteer. She comes in on her own and helps me out, so at least somebody's there to greet everybody. But we are working on, too, is maybe getting some more trustworthy volunteers that that way I can actually be in the field and talking to people, but still, you know, have that open. And I've got the door open now, and I want everyone to know we've got, we're redoing the whole building. We've got new open signs so people know we're there. And so we're really, they're very, they get you very motivated. So we're excited to see all the new changes.
I'm excited.
Yeah, we're excited, too. We want us to make it.
Yes. We really, really, really want this to work out really well.
What are your hours?
Well, right now, I'm pretty much in there as much as I can be. So we need to sit down and like set hours. But I think the first thing, too, is because her mom does have health issues and she is coming in on her own time, I would like to get a couple different volunteers that I can schedule and make sure that we have it covered at all times. But right now, I try to make sure I'm there in the peak times, between 10 to 2. And I'm checking the voicemails every day I'm going through, and I'm trying to get caught up with everybody and all the needs that have kind of gotten dropped off because they've been so busy trying to work and plan all these big events and everything. So, yeah. So we really want us to go well. So, and I definitely would welcome any feedback from you guys, because you guys are the ones in the community doing everything. So I'm all yours, and I'm, I'm open for any, you know, suggestions.
Can we just thank you for giving us?
Oh, I'm so excited. Very excited. They gave me this opportunity. So, and they're a wonderful group. So they really, you know, they put in a lot of time outside of working full-time just to make sure to succeed, so.
We're currently working on revamping the entire building. It's definitely come under some disrepair over the years, that people haven't been in there full-time. So once we have that completely fully doing grand opening, someone would, will send out an education to the.
Fine, pretty long. You get to go to a grand opening?
Yes, in November, so, yeah.
I think that's great. With Ariana, I was really excited when I saw them. Oh, I have hope.
Oh, me, too. Me, too. I think that this is a good fit for both us, you know, me and them. I think this is like a perfect, I just love working with them anyway, and I love hearing all the ideas and the part, everything I get to be a part of, so I'm pretty excited.
I do have one question, because I was at a meeting today, and they asked how many members you have, and I'm like, I don't know. So how many board members, positions do you have? Plus, I saw you put them on there.
Um, we have, we, our bylaws are seven board members.
Okay.
One position.
Are you full on board now?
No, no, we're not.
Yeah, I heard one position was going to be rolling over, and then we also really want to start working, because they do have a position for a student on the, so I want to start working with them and see if that would be great for a student, even just for a college application and get the experience and all that, so.
Alicia Engel.
Alicia Engel? Okay. Yeah.
She's the one that worked on his to be at the.
Oh, perfect. Yeah. Because you guys had to be council students as well, right? And was that through them?
No. Not, uh, for, not for City Council.
Okay.
But when I was on the chamber, it was through Alicia Engel. We had a student that would show up to meetings, student needs.
Perfect.
So I'd be remiss to not mention the last, which I, I'm really excited that you're going to be the new executive director. I think you're fantastic, Danny, but the prior board, I had mentioned, since you guys do receive a subsidy from the city, I asked if it would be possible to get some reporting as to like what kind of activities you're engaged in and stuff, so that we can maybe hear about it quarterly, so that we can provide that information to people that ask us about where that subsidy is for.
I'd say it's actually kept on QuickBooks, all on record, all the, you know, incomings and outgoings and everything. It's all documented on there, so as long as, I, I'm allowed to share them, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so it was just, they, they said that they couldn't man the desk, right? Which it sounds like you're manning.
I'm not the desk.
But then, like you said, that you might want to go out and engage with the community and stuff, and that's where we were getting kind of hazy, because nobody was manning the desk prior. So that, that's the kind of reporting, just like, oh, today I went out in the community and I'm out with a few businesses and, you know, that kind of stuff.
And the biggest thing right now is the only way for me to secure my job is to increase membership. That's what pays for it. So right now, I'm in the phase of getting things organized and getting in touch with the businesses and trying to, you know, communicate and, and all that. But I also, it is very important that I get in there, because then they, they won't have the funding for, for very long.
And they find their volunteers.
Absolutely, yeah.
Even with just the one volunteer we've had over the summer, very part-time, the, one of our chamber members at the lodge last year put together 500 blue bags, together the travel commission, to have available on the porch for people to stop by. This year, we've done awesome under it, because somebody's been able to group people and let them get information on the.
Great. All the same.
Thank you. Me, too. I'm very excited. I appreciate the rest of the support, because, yeah, it's very important. You guys are very connected in the community, so.
Get it to you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Citizens Business and Meeting. Number one, Tucker Electric requests for an electrical license. So we have the following requested electrical license. Contractor is Tucker Electric, E. Master electrician is Morgan Tucker. Journeyman electrician, Martin Worsko. Apprentice electrician is Algoril Luggis. All fees have been paid for. Copies of the license approved of insurance and bond have been provided for 2024, 2025. A copy of the manual and electrical license is attached to the.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the electrical license for Tucker Electric.
Second, any further discussion?
We're ready.
It looks like they're out of. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Moving on to Old Business, we have number one, recognition of Ahead of Our Times, BLM and WISPs. We are going to hold off on the BLM until October 7th meeting, but the first recognition is for Ahead of Our Times and recognition of their work to beautify our community with a piece to the building. And it looks very, very nice.
Thank you, yes. We were pleased with it, too, for sure. It looks really good. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And then we have another certificate for WISPs Center in recognition of their work to beautify our community with a piece to their building, so.
Thank you.
That did, they came in on Monday, and they finished it on Thursday. They did it in four days. They made the whole building.
I thought they finished it like in a day.
That was.
It was like.
It was amazing, because.
I remember standing there waiting for.
Yeah, they were. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love that there's.
You gave me some fruit bar stuff, didn't you? I do, I do. It was delicious.
Good, right? Because we have to cover two of the facilities for the service if we're not.
Hi, how are you tonight?
How are you?
Good. Good. Cool. For those of you that don't know me, I think everybody pretty much does, but I'm Shane Kershey, Miss Manager for Campbell County LPMs, for the ambulance service provider here in Newcastle and for Weston County. We provided the city with an updated service contract that has our updated subsidy with the three and a half percent inflationary increase that we asked for, which brought the total up to $103,500 per year.
Says 50.
Stay 50?
$103,500.
Gotcha. Sorry, the voucher is stay 500, so that's what I was reading on. But we can definitely get that.
Sorry.
No, that's it. I'm just here in case anyone had any questions in regards to the service contract. We can definitely get that contract updated. I should have just missed the dollar sharing.
You guys take this up?
Tom Love now, our attorney.
He just needs to change the.
The dollar bill?
Yeah, because it's written, but it's the dollar.
Gotcha. I can, I can definitely have him make that change. This does match, other than the dollar bill, it does match what was presented to Weston County as well. Tom did have a question in regards to the contract, too. Whether or not it needs to be approved by the Attorney General's Office as is, as it is an intergovernmental contract, so I'm not sure. Sounds like Mike over at Weston County doesn't necessarily seem to think that it does need to be signed by the EAG. I'm not sure what Dublin's opinion is of it. I don't believe so either, but here is a status as a quasi-governmental, not-for-profit agency.
I would have to look into that, but normally I didn't think that that would actually be required. Usually that's enough. When two entities are actually. Contract of some sort, but this is basically just, I mean, it is a service agreement, so. I can look into that and I can talk to Tom.
Okay. As far as other updates, so far Campbell County Health has, had 411 calls for service since January 1 in Weston County and Newcastle with 310 transports, 17 of those did originate in South Dakota. So we do operate a progress service area in the Custer Highlands, so we did, it was 17 calls up there. We were awarded the SAMSSA Rule 2024 Training Grant, so we hope to be able to roll out some, some education and training specifically in mental health first aid awareness, some opioid response programs, and what's referred to as a warm handoff for somebody that's been, that's experienced a mental health crisis, getting them in touch with a, I believe it's a peer counselor, basically somebody who works in behavioral health and can start, start the process of getting them the help that they need. A lot of times, people experiencing mental health crises don't necessarily need an ambulance, but it's the closest thing to the correct kind of response that they need. So we're working with the state on, on how we can improve that response model and actually get them in touch with the internal specialists. So there'll be some more training opportunities for our staff and for communities. This will actually get rolled out through all our response areas, so Sheridan County, Campbell County, and Weston County. I do not have an update yet on the EMS Needs Assessment that I spoke to the council about, I believe, a couple of months ago. We did apply for it, we just haven't heard anything back from the state yet.
Have you gotten any further information from the county on the district?
We have not. I did check in with Becky Hadlock on that last week. Mike was at the office, and Jen Davis, the Senior Policy Advisor to Governor Gordon, did reach out to Mike and say, hey, we have a team, we would like to help you guys get this put together. I have not seen any communication back and forth between her and Mike. So I'm hopeful to follow up with Becky and Mike here soon. So we'd like to see where that EMS Saxon District can go.
Because the next election, not this one, we would have recovered, but the next one will be, be here, be for the.
Right, right. We want to make sure that we have that ready to go before that next election also, absolutely.
Are you guys still doing almost 100% coverage for Apple?
As far as I know, yes. I do not know, and I apologize for that. I've been focused in a little bit different direction. We've got a number of fires in our, in our area, and that's kind of taking up a bunch of my time. I do not know the status of the EMT class that Upton was facilitating. I know we've got our own class currently going on with 19 students out of 25 spots. So we've had pretty good luck with that. It's within its first couple of weeks. I think it went, started the beginning of September. I don't know the exact date, though, but I've heard good comments from the class so far on that.
Is that the name, Gillette?
That's the one, the Hilda Gillette, yes.
Is there any of those students from, from our area?
Not that I heard.
I was afraid of that.
Yeah. So it is exciting to hear that Chamber of Commerce has a new executive director. I'd like to get you in touch with our business development coordinator, Lisa Jackson, so.
That'd be wonderful.
I'll definitely give you your contact info.
Absolutely.
Do, do you need to have this corrected before we do? So if you can have those correct that, and our next meeting is the seventh, that would be.
I move that we table the Campbell County Health EMS Service Agreement in our next meeting. Second.
Do we have a second, any further discussion?
Would you also look into item number four, item number six? Any identification that that needs to have something in there for waiver subrogation? Not sure, but I guess with that sovereign immunity.
There basically just saying neither party's leaving their sovereign immunity, governmental or sovereign.
I believe it's a governmental, and I correctly found one, but I believe it's a governmental agency. Neither party can hold each other responsible, so that's why that language is in there. Again, it's a little bit above my head that Tom's been pretty, pretty up on, making sure that language makes it into all of Campbell County Health's contracts. Has some reasons to why they have the Claims Act, there's some protections afforded to businesses.
Maybe we can send you an email of questions that we have.
Absolutely.
Right next to the meeting, and we'll go over if you have questions under any of the ones that you need clarification, so we don't actually tailor it for you.
Good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, NuK Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the City Council, School Board, or County Commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
So number three, under Old Business, is proposed project application. So if you remember from our last meeting, we had Aaron Darlington, which you're coming from the Natural Resource District, and referred to the story walk. After talking with Ben Sprockets and city's crew supervisor and kind of walking the trail at the skate park, I think the three of us are in agreement that the skate park might not be the right decision for this. It's a great idea, and the city crew supervisor and I thought about maybe moving it to Centennial Park, which is the red, white, and blue park, because they have that light path. That's not a good way, because it's not just a walking path, it's a light path, and kids are stocking, they're restoring, and if it comes by, if moms, you know, my or dad or grandma or aunt uncle, whoever, and kids might barge around, we just don't want that to be the way that we get through. So we would like to maybe speak with, get with Aaron and then maybe walk them through what we talked about. So I just wanted to give an update on that, and I think it comes to school. But we spoke with Jeremy and Ben Sprockets and the supervisor and kind of looked at it, and that was our opinion.
I agree with that. I walked it the other day, and it's like, I don't even know how a bike and a walker are going to work there. Yeah, so they're going to be kind of, well, the bikes are, they're going to be going fast, right? You know, where they're at, and where I tell them to get it. I just don't want to see anybody.
Right.
So, but we kind of looked at Centennial Park, and, you know, they can come in, in that alley, start the story, kind of go down towards the tunnel, turn around and come back towards the park, and have, you know, story time on each side of that walk, and then we don't have to worry about right away, or people turning the corner on the.
Direct the missions.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to kind of give a, so you guys are okay with maybe, um, meet with the, um, the, or idea, maybe have her meet us at the park. Good one. I'll get with her, and then we get the, the Old Business for the next meeting. Moving on to number four, under Old Business, Ben Sprockets, I see Karen is here, so.
We're going to actually begin with another update. It's moving right along. We had another update Saturday. I know, Anna, you came out and saw it, I heard from a lot of people at Bell. It's a work in progress, and there's a few things I want to clear up too that I'll get to. But so we had another work day, 29 people come out on Saturday and helped volunteer for this project, the backyard park. That's awesome.
It's great because it was 32 last time, right?
Right, the other thing that's great is half these people were different people. So a large variety of citizenry, I guess if you want, that's coming out and worrying about this.
And younger people.
And younger people, yeah, for sure. And to tell you like I did last time about the kids and how that is what we're doing this for, yeah, there was kids riding on this trail at the end of the day, and there was parents, and I said, well, what about our other projects that we do in the area? Like, oh yeah, we just got them that bike and we just took them to the flying V trail. So that's that next step of using the trail systems that we have in this area that makes this community pretty awesome. So that's a growing success. So yeah, 29 people, half are new. And just to clarify too, and this kind of got concreet from some of the volunteers, I let them know that we're working in dirt and that this project is going to end up having a blueprint to it, and a lot of the work we are doing might be erased with every place. But that takes time, and we don't have the funds to finish a project next spring. We're not going to have a skate park done, we're not going to have a hard surface bike path in there, we're not, we might just have the funding, but it takes time to build. And in the meantime, we're going to build this like it's going to be here for three years, for five years, and hopefully we keep our enthusiasm up and we get it done sooner, and that's awesome. But in the meantime, we have a place for kids to go, for myself to go, for Anna to go and walk right now. And that trail, the walking bike trail, it's a walking and a bike trail, and that means a little bit of education for kids ripping on bikes, that they need to slow down when there's people walking, and that's a lesson to learn. There's sharp turns, and that's a lesson to learn. You go too fast, guess what, you're going to crash, and you might get hurt a little bit, but that's just in life too, and they'll learn, and they'll learn those skills. The pump track, which if you get, I hope that you all get out there and look at it, and there's a pump track coming in the bottom, so if you didn't know what that was, you're going to see an eighth of it done, and that's a lot more work, and it's coming along, and it'll take a little bit more work, and we're talking to some, excuse me, some volunteers with equipment in town and also coordinating with where Brad and his folks are able to assist as well. And get that roughed in, get it packed in, and have it ready for when we hit snow and that moisture finally, we'll help that turn from dust to actually a hard pack. And then you're going to see what those kids can really do on that trail. And while we're doing that, we're still modifying our uses there too. And Pam and I were talking this morning, and a friend of mine just this afternoon sent me texts about kids on striders, so this is the little, little kids, making sure that they have a place that they can ride. And guess what, Pam, they're not going to stay in that easy stuff long, and they're going to be on that pump track riding, and that's what we want to make sure that folks are aware of. They are riding on that bike trail just as much as anybody else too. Got pictures of a three and a four-year-old doing it this afternoon, so that's an awesome success. But it's not done, we're still working, and there's going to be wrinkles here and there. We're working with the neighbors, making sure that they're happy with it, making sure that we're staying on our side of the line and that we know where the lines are at, and making sure that people know where we're at. I know that Pam's working, some of the neighbors mentioned that there's motorized vehicles in there, and I'm sure that's going to dissipate, but honestly, that wasn't kids, that was adults, and there's going to be a sign there, control that, access control down to the bottom side. We would like to stimulate the city, Greg, getting the port potty there, that's going to be a nice thing too. Got used during the work day, it's going to be used when kids go there. There will be litter, I had somebody complain about people leaving litter already, they do that everywhere, but we'll work on that. So on a trash can, I mean, that's, that's fine, but kids are kids, and they know not to leave their water bottles, so. I'd like to take any questions if any of the council has any, or.
Can I add a few things?
Sure.
So, you know, I'm trying to keep communicating, the line of communication open for residents, not for me, you know, just courtesy. So one of the, they're starting to see people kind of cut through their properties, so we talked about, it's only temporary, but we're putting that much of the orange plastic fence seam along their property lines, so they went out and measured those today. We talked about placing some signs for the lines, vehicles, and the residents seem very happy because we've been keeping that line of communication open, letting them know that, hey, you know, you're going to see people walking around doing this, that's, obviously people are out there riding, we're aware of all the way, you know, about our things being, just to keep that, you know, positive between us and you.
Are they, are people partying with them, or have they said anything?
No, I've only heard that they're just walking through up there and, you know, once the fence goes in, the fence goes in, I mean, I don't know if they're just going to just bring, probably still have to look and see what's going to go there. The other thing is, is I know a lot of people in the community have been upset, thinking how much money is being spent, but not one dime from the city has been spent besides how much gas per, using.
Oh, around four gallons decent fuel we burned out one day. Burned a little bit of decent fuel for the installation of the frost rate hydrant.
Awesome. So we did a donation from the refinery and hopefully get on, judge on that, and, you know, we just got a $1,300 donation, and hopefully we're more ready for the big expensive part of the town, which would be the cement, the drive to the skate park, hopefully that's all from donations, not from, from the parks, but project.
That's cool. And we're hoping that we'll be able to do it in phases, again, it's part of that temporary, that the bike track that's out there right now might be temporary, but again, as funding comes, different parts can be done. I wish we had just a big one, someone just drop in here and we could go do it all and get the three and four things. And we're also clearing up lines of communication, so we're not, so people know where to go for information on it in the directive, and we're, we've had a lot of enthusiasm, so we've had some freelance work out there, and we're kind of getting that a little more controlled. So as I said, part of the reason for that, it's not because I want to control everything, we have plans in there, it might still be a pencil drawing in a notebook or mind and in my head, but we consider the drainage, which is huge, we consider the safety, the aspect of the slope to this, the out slope, there's a lot of design to this, and it's not just scraping off the pine needles, there's more to it, and as we do that, it's making sure it's done correctly, and so it is fun and safe. So anybody from here from the council, go walk that or ride a bike on it, and it will be safe and hopefully fun at the same time.
There's a fun video that, that Lance and Cheryl put together, and it's a great video, so I did post that on social media, maybe you all do social media, you'd like to see it, look at it, or review it, so if you, but I thought, just kind of, he walked, he kind of walked it, so it's like an eight-minute video, but it kind of gives you a little bit of an idea.
A small little snapshot of the day, but swing by there, take a look at that.
Did you post it from your personal account?
Well, the way he sent it to me, I had to, but it is on the city site, what's happening and.
I'll look for it there. Yeah, I just wanted to expound on that too, Karen, like, this is a project that the community can really get behind, and most of the work has been done by volunteers, and I'm really excited about it personally, and it's going to be a fun place to take our kids. We've been looking for things for our kids to do in this community, and I think that this is going to be a great spot as it continues to develop. So I thank a lot, you know, for, for you and Ben Sprockets, all of you guys, it's hard work.
And council will let you know when we get a date figured out for, we didn't plan on doing an October work day, but now we have to kind of scramble and see how our schedules flow, because that's just, oh, it's going to be Saturday, there's a little bit more to it than that, so we'll try and let you all know and keep that on social media as well for when the next work day is coming up. If you have any questions, you can all get over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Any new business? Any committee reports? Moving on to department heads reports, Police Chief Derek Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, calls for service since the 2nd of September, Newcastle Police Department 187, Weston County Sheriff's Office 114, Upton Police Department 16, Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department 7, Weston County Fire Protection District 6, Upton Volunteer Fire Department 3, Upton Ambulance 2, and Newcastle Ambulance 19. Now, Matt, I don't have anything to report, anything else to report.
So I needed to address something with you, chief. I was given a complaint yesterday around 10:45 a.m. or 11:00. There was a patrol car parked at one of the grocery stores in town, and it was left running while the officer was in the store shopping.
Okay.
So I didn't know if they were shopping for their own personal groceries or if they were shopping for the department, I don't know any of the particulars, but I didn't know if there's a policy against leaving the cars running.
No, there's not a policy against it, they have been advised not to do that for obvious reasons, waste of fuel, and the even bigger issue is motor hours, engine hours on vehicles that they wear out, so they're out of, it was yesterday, you said?
Yeah, yesterday. Around 11:00 a.m., the person called and complained about it.
Okay.
So I just didn't know if you wanted to address that, chief.
Yeah, I'll look into that and see what the circumstances were and figure it out.
Thanks, chief.
Anything else for chief? Moving on to city attorney general.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last meeting, the council had asked that I look into some of the fees and the fines concerning nuisances, I think there was a comment about basically water. In the, in the ordinances, the actual nuisance ordinance basically just states that the city gets the right to then go in after a certain amount of time, after giving notice, to actually service the yard, cut the grass, or put the trees back to a certain length, or whatever it is, and then they can bill that to the person who's basically at fault for not maintaining. I don't know if that's what the council is desirous of.
Can that be a lien against the property?
So at first it starts as a bill, but uncollected bills, right, ones that are outstanding, eventually it could be turned into one, but the, the issue with that is, is most of the time people generally will end up paying a $200 or $300 bill.
So we're talking about, they get a citation, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, and they get notice and they say, and you can, I can read it to you if you want, but.
No, but is that kind of what we're talking about, so like they get a citation for, to cut the grass?
It's a notice, and then they have a certain amount of time, yeah, and then if they don't do it within that time period, they basically are cited for it, and then the service or whomever the city hires or the city workers do it is charged to the offender.
Okay.
Personally cited. So after a certain amount of time, you can, it still fascinates me, this happened to quite a few people I know when I was in college, they weren't taking care of their yards, and the city government went in and took care of their yards, so.
Like we give them a time period that has to be signed, so because if you put something on the door and you say, I get something, so is that some thing?
I mean, you just have to make sure that they're getting noticed because of the fact that it is their property, right, meaning they have a right to.
So like a certified letter or something like that?
Yeah. Nuisances, and this is the practice of most municipalities that I've ever worked for, seen or been around. Says the chief of police shall obey all nuisances. He may at all times during the daytime enter all stores and other buildings and premises when needed and necessary to examine the same for the purpose of ascertaining whether the same are properly kept or not. He may serve notice on any owner or occupant of any store or other building or premises requiring such owner or occupant to obey the same in such manner, and if such officer shall deem best within 72 hours. Provided such nuisance, shall we obey it unless he shall deem it advisable to do so. Any person refusing to comply with such order in the time specified shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. Should the duty of such officer at the expiration of such time at once to obey such nuisance and report to the city council the expense of the same or on suit shall be instituted against the offender by the city to recover the expenses afterward paid by such city. So basically, they apply. I don't know if, Stacy, I don't think I can put you on the spot, but have we had anyone that didn't end up paying, you know, their, you know, they didn't, they went through this entire process, a letter was sent, need to cut your grass, whatever it is, and then they didn't pay the bill?
Not that I'm aware of, since I didn't, right?
And then it's the same process for?
While we're talking about this, September 15th is very long, so trailers need to be moved, correct? Off the streets, trailers can't be moved.
So are we, just to clarify, we're talking about trailers, you said?
Well, it's just, she's saying.
We're talking about weeds.
We were, I said, as long as we're talking about kind of ordinance-y type stuff, I just kind of wanted to break up that it is September 16th.
So like I said at the meeting before, we really want to cite people for weeds when the city needs to cut their own weeds? I mean, there's lots of weeds on them, there's streets with weeds on them, and you're going to go cite somebody because of their weeds, and we're not cutting our weeds?
Okay, okay, that's not bad.
One of the biggest complaints that I get from our constituents is the fact that they feel like we're not taking pride in our community, so we're leaving things unkempt, and there's weeds thrown out of the cracks on the sidewalks on Vane Street.
That, that lot that you used, I think you owned it, did you, Tom, on those apartments, you know, right on?
Right at the bottom of Old Lady Blatt, yeah, I used to own that.
That's what I said, you used to. I don't know who owns that now, but it's a mess. I mean, and it's.
I don't want that.
When people drive through, it's a mess.
I don't know who owns it.
So one of the points was that we live in a nice community at the base of the Black Hills, we have kind of an ideal location, so we all just need to be a little bit better about how we take care of our properties and the image that we project everyone around.
But Tyrell, we do that. Who are you talking to?
I'm, I'm saying we as a community, right?
That's what I'm talking.
I mean, I, I think you have a lovely home.
No, I'm just saying, we do that, you know, it's. Isn't that, isn't that a side mark, some responsibility of the?
Adjacent landowners.
I know I'm not.
We, we do have city laws that, we do have city laws that we need to uphold, and the problem is the staffing is an issue. We did plan on, now the increases in staff I requested a year ago was to have another person to handle some of these. The problem is we haven't found anybody yet.
Well, and I'm sure one of these is lots or whatever, are people that can't do it too, I mean, you know the problems we can't.
This hasn't been a practice. The last time I remember the city doing it was shortly after I did the policy.
You mean for them to?
For us to.
Give a notice and then they go out and do it?
We did practice that pretty regularly in the summertime. There was one fellow employee, two seasonal workers, that's pretty much all they did in many practices. We haven't done that, I bet, for probably 80, 23, 24 years. So, and as new as that. Because one, our, our two parts people right now are bringing in around 41, 32 hours to maintain what we have and don't go over what we're doing right now. To add even more work requires more people. To add even more work requires more people. I, I don't have a problem doing if we have enough people to do it. But once we start down this road, we're either going to have to put somebody for the water leaks, street patching, cemetery work.
Those are the main priorities. Not a decision that are made because of the few choices we have. I understand. I get it, I totally understand. So, sorry.
No worries. There were, is that if there's anything else that you wanted me to look into, I can look into it. I know it was basically just trying to figure out whether or not, uh, the fines were sufficient to keep, you know, repeat offenders from continuously just doing it. And if there is anything else the council wants me to look into, I can do that. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, any, any questions for City Attorney?
Thanks, Paul.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
City Attorney, Stacy Henry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I emailed everybody a copy of the resignation letter for Heather Davies that I received. I would like to request permission to advertise for that position.
I move that Clerk Taggart be able to advertise for the deputy clerk position.
I'm sorry.
We'll give a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I was sorry to hear that we're leaving Heather and that we got a look for somebody else.
Um, favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
I move that we accept, um, Heather Davies' resignation letter.
Aye, second, with regret.
We'll give a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Um, favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Um, and, uh, previous Deputy Clerk Becky Bonner Pitch finally gave me a day to have her retirement party. So that'll be the twenty-seventh at two o'clock. And the only other thing I have, I just wanted to, uh, make sure everybody had received the report that I emailed out from the Children's Center. And, um, Seth Parsons with the Weston County Home Health called today and said he didn't have a lot to report for this quarter, but would be making a report prior mid-year. And that's all I have.
Um, any questions for?
I hope probably we just have a little at the same day because that'll be her last day.
Okay, moving on to Public Works Supervisor, Greg Stott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item I have is we did open a bid for the new, for a new garbage truck. It looks a little strange because the same Peterbilt company did both of them, but they bid with two different break, or directions bodies. The first one was Peterbilt, Wyoming, uh, with a debris body eject, ejects, fully eject side load refuse body for four hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. The second one was, uh, Peterbilt Wyoming with Elliott Equipment did a sidewinder XTR rear tilt beds side load refuse body for four hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. With these specs that we had, um, I would recommend we award, I would recommend the council award a bid to Peterbilt Wyoming with the debris, full eject side load refuse body for four hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. With this truck, we are trying to get some funding still. We did not receive the grant through the DEQ. We are working on trying to get some funding through another portion of DEQ. If we cannot, we will be a lease purchase.
How much a month does a lease purchase cost?
Uh, it's, I'm not sure quite yet because we've got over a year of wait. We gotta make sure we get everything taken care of now. It's about a three-hundred-and-eighty-day delivery time. So we won't see this truck till probably October or November of next year.
So, uh, what's the difference in the, in the, uh, mechanism for the two trucks?
So looking with the new landfill, they do have a transfer station they're building, they built. With that in mind, on windy days or days that it's too muddy that we can't, we cannot get down to the pit, we will actually be able to eject out the back instead of tipping the body up. Right now, all our trucks tip up to dump the debris out of the back. This truck will actually pick the tailgate up and push it out the back, allowing us to dump inside of the transfer station.
So the one you're recommending does that? The other one does?
Yes.
Correct. And then the, uh, uh, is there an opportunity to put in for some grant funding prior to the delivery of the truck?
Yes, I'm working on that right now.
So, so you might be able to work on some kind of a, a grant or funding package to help purchase the truck?
Yes, through season transfer. Uh, since we've entered into season transfer program with DEQ, we're not building a transfer station. There's money available, possibly money available for this truck. Most likely it'd be around three hundred thousand on their side and a hundred thousand on ours.
I move that we, um, approve the bid for Peterbilt for four hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Is that even?
Yes.
Should we say something about without funding? We have to go through the lease purchase.
No, I don't know. Should we double?
Can we get a motion to a second and so we can discuss?
Second. We have a motion in a second for the discussion.
Okay, so I'm sorry, what was that?
Well, I was, I was just wondering if a motion shouldn't ever talk about that funding. If he doesn't get the funding for the grant, then we have to go through a lease purchase.
Frankly, I know that a lease purchase is just as applicable as the purchase. Um, obviously you don't know what the agreement's going to entail you or what you're going to be paying or what they're going to be paying.
Yes, I made the recommendation from the banks. Because we are looking at over a year out and interest rates may change between now and then. So most likely what we're going to do is start working on the lease purchase around July first in the next fiscal year. We did budget for an estimated cost for lease purchase through our rate analysis and, uh, for next year's budget.
I think this is the most frustrating thing is that the supply chain and the way that we're allowed to get goods, uh, is so broken right now. We can't get a garbage truck for a year. Uh, I just find that really frustrating.
Well, actually, Councilman, this is normal. The last one we purchased in two thousand and fifteen took, uh, fourteen and a half months to get to the EBS.
Didn't really.
Granted, it had an accident on the way down from Canada and damaged the tailgate. So they had to take it back and replace it.
And bought it out of Canada?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's where it was met, that's where the debris directions body was originally built.
Are there any used trucks for sale? Like this?
I've never bought a used garbage truck, Councilman, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Which, oh, I've got forty thousand dollars on a ten-year old or an eight-year old truck.
Here yet, okay.
So there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of, a lot of work in there. They pick up between three hundred and four hundred pounds a day.
I've had to help them work on these trucks, too, and it's disgusting.
Well, that work, I guess we approved the four hundred and three and the waiting on that grant that we don't need. And obviously that's a, then go back to the lease purchase piece that we're, we basically agreed we're going to spend four hundred and three thousand dollars.
But that's what you said. Lease purchase is the same as a purchase.
Craig, the, I guess, the contention at least that comes up in my mind is you obviously want to order this now so that it can be here by October, right? Without really knowing what, how payment is going to be allocated and not actually first getting those grants, I'm not sure that, that the city could, could pass, you know, or move to have a, you know, four hundred and three thousand dollar budget for this payment, whatever else it is. The difference is, is that we don't know exactly how much we're going to end up paying. You see what I'm saying? So is there any way that you could get some more information on this or?
As far as financing through the lease purchase?
Yeah, especially specifically on that.
Yes.
So give us our worst, worst-case scenario.
I mean, it's in the rate analysis. I mean, it's already been figured into the, right?
Into the rate. But the thing is, is, uh, I've seen it as an employee of the city shop, but we nickel and dime all of our equipment. So if we don't agree to purchase this now, um, we blow some lines, we damage some electronics in the truck. And then we end up spending more and more on the, on the truck in, in the meantime, instead of just getting something on the road and trying to get something done before we end up having to spend tens of thousands of dollars on, on maintaining and fixing the equipment that breaks a lot.
Last year's budget, we spent over forty thousand dollars on the current truck we use on a daily basis. We've spent another additional ten thousand dollars on the truck we're going to use on holidays or when the other trucks broke down. There were two days in the last year we could not pick up airbrushes at all for the entire day because.
It's a year point.
Yeah, and I understand that a little bit. But we also meant, me, I'm trying to look at this fiscally responsible, is where we have the money. I hate to say we're going to spend the money when we don't even know we have a grant yet. So we're going to commit four hundred and three thousand dollars to him and we don't have a grant. So we're good with that. And I know it's been down, we know we had it in the lead a few months ago. We've worked on the emissions, I think it was, and something else, and then hydraulics and the other trouble with that. And like I said, you know, we need to replace it, but, um, I hate to just do a motion out there, we're going to spend this money and hopes we're going to get a grant or, yeah, we're going to go now, go get a lease purchase piece on it. I want to have a little bit of forethought in my mind to try to move forward, let, replace it.
That may be amending the motion to Rebecca.
I think what we need is so that we can get our ducks in a row to make sure that.
But we're never, we're not going to know that we're, we've got a funding for it.
The timeframe for the funding is either December fifth, that meeting, or I don't remember exactly if it changed. But if we wait till that time, then it's going to be.
Right.
We'll have another year on this truck. Two years. Some sudden here to, you know, obviously we want to first is get a grant for what we can. Secondly, you know, okay, that's the only way we're going to be able to do this now is if we can't get a grant, then we have to do a lease purchase.
So along those lines, I just got to throw this out there really quick. When we're talking about fiduciary responsibility, uh, having been a prime employee of the city, I've watched us pour more money into equipment trying to repair it than the equipment was actually worth. So I, I don't think that that's where to be fiscally responsible when we, uh, you know, pour tons of money and time and labor into equipment that constantly breaks down and isn't worth the repairs that are done to it. So I, I understand, so I will amend my mo, or my motion, but I want to know how to model it here because.
But the other thing too is we have to remember and look at everything else. You know, at this time, we looked at it and it was this price. And then we go back and, or three months later, we go back and it's almost tripled. So we have to keep that in our consideration too. Because if we don't lock in a price that we're getting.
Does this lock it in, Greg?
Yes. And like I said, it would be the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year before we would actually take the truck.
So we can lock the price in today, that's a good point, Mayor.
The, looking at what we paid, what we're paying for the mini excavators lease purchase, it would be roughly fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars per year for five years for the lease purchase.
And that much, was it in the analysis?
Yes, we did. We did figure in the replacement of the garbage truck.
It is paid for.
That's what I'm saying, Tom. I mean, it's almost paid for.
We, we did, we did budget for the replacement of this.
With the.
And have the intent with the next fiscal year's budget starting, talk starting in March, that this is one of the items that will be on, coming out of a regular garbage piece.
Don, are you satisfied with that?
In a way, right?
If I'm.
Words, without saying we're projected to get this money in, but we have not put that in place yet. So I don't want to count our chickens before their hatch because we haven't put it in place yet to account for that income.
What would be in the agreement, like if we want to get this stuff and it couldn't move forward? Is there a cancellation policy?
Yes, there is. I remember what, I don't remember at the top of it. Like I said, we, we are planning to budget for it in the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. It's right on the top of the list of things to come out of the, the fees that we, we have. We missed, we did not get the grant in March that I applied for, for three hundred and fifty thousand. But we still had to move forward, so we did with current number, with the current interest rate, which is six percent.
Greg, if you signed a lease purchase with them now and, and, and we just, we bought it as a lease purchase and then got a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, can we get, can we buy it off sooner?
Well, actually.
And not get a license for that?
We will know by the time we have to pay for it, whether we have the grant or not. We won't have to start paying on the lease purchase until we take possession of the truck. So we won't even seek possession of the truck until October or November of next year.
So I think it sounds like it was safe to move forward, especially if there's a cancellation policy.
I agree, Mayor, I think it's safe to move forward.
And, um, if there's a cancellation policy and we need to change, we can, we can make a motion down the road to redound what you're doing with the committee.
Yeah. Since it's already been budgeted, when the full prices are in the.
We did plan on paying the full price all along. You forget the grant, we save the money.
Right. So it's already in the plan.
We can use some of that money for something else then.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Does that answer a large thought you have?
Yeah, this, you know, as, and we agreed on that one and then we go to get a grant. I just don't want to shoot herself in the foot of saying we've already purchased it and the grant committee look at that and say, well, you're coming for a grant you already purchased. So.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I just, I just want to get the cart before the horse. You know, and I know we need a piece of equipment because we, we've had some issues with the, this whole year and not in previous.
So couldn't that hurt us? Like, we're paying for it?
Sure, I, I.
Or getting, asking for a grant?
Depending on the person that I've been visiting with, um, I don't think it will, but it'd be any better to table it and let me visit with them to make sure.
Okay. Okay. So, we can, I mean, so...
You could move to rescind your motion and table it first.
I feel that's what we do.
I move that to rescind my motion and table this until the meeting in October, first meeting in October.
I mean, I did, on me nights, I seconded his first, or was that his second? Second, okay. So, motion has been rescinded. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always opposed, same sign. So, can you put this? Thank you.
We will be preparing for the shine and show this coming weekend in the Fall Festival. We also have the hazardous waste day on Saturday as well, we'll be preparing for it, in the system. Other than that, anybody got any questions?
Thank you for being able to tell us these things, Paul. Did you get my message from the park?
Yes, we do actually have, there are enough parks that are not fancy like that.
Can you give a picture of what they look like?
Yeah, that's the question I have about the dog waste stations. We're going to get all kinds of requests for these all over town. How do we wanna move forward with this, 'cause I only buy a bid for the egg we purchased.
Well, we already have them at the other places, we just need to get more involved on what they look like.
We just don't have the actual waste receptacles at the parks. We do have, actually, we use recycled plastic grocery bags.
And is there a trash can close by where they can deposit the...
Yeah, you got a trash can all over the city.
No, I wanted to thank you for the dog waste stations, too. They look great, and I, I thought that was not the need of the constituents that were asking for it, I mean, that was their out, and we got them there, so thank you.
But I am sure we're going to have more, so if we have a, if people are going for a request, we're going to have to answer these questions.
So, I'd like to kind of add a little bit more to that. One of the questions that was being asked was, you know, you put something out there and somebody's like, oh, I can't get this. So, they want a dog park, and so I did re, or added to the course that I had that it is in the capital plan of parks to, to add a dog park on the road, it was just, it comes out of the general fund, it also funds, you know, for fire, police, streets, etc., so it's not at the top of the power list, so people have to, that's just, it's in the capital plan, it's just not at the top of the capital list, so... And it would, you know, we, we talked a little bit about ideas of where it would go, but that it would be a minimum of fifty dollars if it was started, and we just don't want to have that general fund yet, maybe it's out there.
So, when you asked for suggestions at that meeting, Madam Mayor, and I threw out the suggestion for the dog park, I've since been talking to some of the, some of my constituents, and they called me that, and I, I thought it was a great idea because it gave people a place to take their dogs, and then they weren't gonna be in the ball fields, defecating all the baseball diamonds and everything. But since then, I've talked to quite a few people, and they say that dog parks are a bad idea, because they're like a Petri dish of disease, and all of the dogs that you take that are on the list of getting communicable diseases out of the same water dishes, plus people abuse the parks and then leave the feces out there, and it just turns into this giant Petri dish of nastiness, and it's not good for your dogs. So, I, I don't know which direction to go. A lot of the, the people that have dogs said that they, they wouldn't mind other people taking their dogs there, but they would not personally frequent the park because they wouldn't want their dog to get sick or get a disease. So, I just don't know what sort I answered as on this one now, but they threw me that curveball.
And it's, it's not at the top of the capital plan, that's something, I think we were considering, we're going to get to that, but it was just something, you know, like I said earlier, it's like you can post a decision that was made, and not everybody knows the choice that they're able to choose them from, so it was just trying to get that information out for the, for, or, I said, because that's what, where we're at as the city is. But no, I'm, I'm bothered with my example.
Council, they think about requesting the issue, so we've already had one outside of the regular city parks.
Take any questions for city? Things against the city, David, September sixteenth, two thousand four?
Your Honor, I move, reduce all the bodies. Take the claim to justice, city.
Okay, we have a motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Always opposed, same sign. We have a motion to the adjournment.
Don't move.
Okay, we have a motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Always opposed, same sign. The adjournment, fifteen.